Good evening, everybody. Today is Wednesday, November 19th. The time is 6:30 PM. We're on the second floor of Town Hall in the Eldon F. Marler Board of Selectment Meeting Room. Before we stand for the pledge, or before we ask those who can stand to stand for the pledge, please be aware that this meeting is being recorded for use on the Internet and our local cable station. Those who do want to stand, please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Constitution, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So, a couple of quick items on the agenda. Very exciting, but quick. Do we have, we have Mark Alden here?
Yes.
How are you, sir?
Good.
Good. You're gonna drive a van for us.
Yes, I've applied for the position for the Council of Aging.
Awesome.
Van, and recently retired, and looking for something, part-time, and a great way to get back to the community, and, yes.
Great.
I'm happy you're blessing.
Yeah, it's usually pretty straightforward on that. Marilyn, anything to add, or Lyndon?
I'm just a little thrilled, up to the other two drivers, and they're doing backflips. They're so happy to have somebody onboard.
Wonderful, I gotta see that.
I'm not so sure about that.
Literal gut feeling. Great. Any discussion, Mike?
I mean, oh, you...
No.
If Marilyn's good with you...
We're a great crew down there.
Yeah.
Great people down there.
Great group of people down there.
Something I didn't know already.
It gets a little rowdy sometimes.
Yeah. Cut down on those parties on the bus, I'm all right home.
Check out the seats.
But, yeah, it is, no. I think, we've said it a million times, Marilyn and the whole team down there do a fantastic job, and happy to have them aboard, so. At this point, I'll make a motion to ratify Mark Alden's employment as van driver at the Council on Aging.
Second.
Aye.
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 Congratulations, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Stay safe out there.
Thank you.
No pressure. All right. And then, the second item is a discussion slash possible vote on a keynote monitor authorization at Hockamock Liquors. As in the past, my company, it does some business with Hockamocks, so I'm gonna accuse myself and turn it over to Marcy, just for the discussion.
Okay. All right. David, any information there?
Yes, so, Hockamock Liquors already has keynote, that's allowed by state. They have petitioned the state lottery to also have a monitor in place as well. So if you go there and you play, you can actually see the numbers on the screen. It is the jurisdiction of the state to approve it, and part of that process is that there is a 20-day appeal period by the liquor licensing agent, which is you guys. So, if you are okay with it, then we'll let them know that the board has no objections, and it will be approved. If you do want to appeal it, then you would take that vote, and then we would start to initiate the appeal process.
This is just a live monitor?
Correct.
No problem?
I don't have anything. Yeah, no problem there.
Want to make a motion?
Yeah, I would ask you just to take a motion, say that you will not appeal the decision for the keynote monitor.
I will make a motion to not appeal the keynote monitor.
I'll second.
On the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So, next on the agenda is a discussion with a resident named John Centrella. And John and I have talked a few times about the issue, I'm sure he's here to address, or I know he's here to address. So, John, if you want to just give us a, you know, I guess, a little background, but...
Okay. They brought me next to me at St. Crescent Street, put in a new septic, and a repair, and it was supposed to be between 25 and 3,000 square feet, and it ended up being, over the course of a period of time, they kept bringing it, fell for about two weeks. And they own the company, and they own the house. They own the acreage company, acreage excavation, and so, the grade, it brought the grade up over and over, and I did report it, and I started getting water, because the grade was, there was such a change in grade. So, I ended up having to, I reported several times, and I know Mr. Gagny even, Mr. Gagny Lachey even had mentioned that he spoke to Tim, because he knew, he and Mr. Ryan had spoke, and that it had been a while that this had been going on, you know? So, they were ordered, they had a, an administrative stormwater plan, and it should have been a general. I had to hire an engineer and a surveyor that could go to their property without going on the property and measuring how much space they actually disrupted, and it was up to 24,000 square feet, instead of the 2 to 3. I was told from the SAT that they were working on a corrective action with the original engineer. I had been sending pictures and videos, I have an abundance of emails and correspondence showing that I was following up on things, and I went to several meetings at the Conservation Commission, and, you know, they have not been much help. They have not offered me too much help. They actually, at one point, they were, the owner of this property was given a verbal cease and desist, because when I had an engineer come to my house, he realized how bad, how much larger this property was getting. And the cease and desist actually was given as a verb, not as a written. And when I asked why, Mr. Hayes said that it was, they were working with a corrective action with their engineer. I called their engineer, he said, "John, I have not been working with anyone." So, next thing, you know, I started to get quite a bit of flooding in my yard, and, don't want, I mean, just, I've been to so many meetings about this, and there's so much, I mean, there's such an abundance of information. I sat there today with all this stuff, and I'm like, "They don't want to see all this. They don't want to hear all this." But, so, they actually, at one point, I was asked to go in, and I was told by Mr. Hayes that I could go in, and I could solve this if I went to the meeting alone, if he would take a piece of paper, and he would draw two squares, which would symbolize both houses. He said, and it would be him and some of Conservation Commission. He said, "You can't bring engineers, it's not a public meeting, it's not gonna be recorded, and you can't bring any paperwork." He said, "And I will decide what happens, as far as, you know, the flooding and everything." And I said, "That's not gonna be in my best benefit to do anything like that." So, in the meantime after that, I was told that they were still, he told me that they were working with the engineer again. This time, the engineer sent me a letter, saying, "John, I spoke to him September, and told you that I wasn't speaking, dealing with them." And he said, "Anything they did, by adding grade, by changing, adding the driveway, all that was not part of my plan. It was a 2,500 to 3,000 square foot plan." So, consequently, this went all through last year, and then, by the time winter came, it was so cold that I was told they were gonna put a swell in. When they actually did the property, when they did, actually were done building it all up, they had the swells directed in my direction, actually headed down into my direction. I have a couple, I have a little packet for each of you, it's not much in it, you know? And they, when they originally were digging up, started removing trees, because they removed all the trees in the yacht, about 150 trees, and they actually broke through the fence, and went eight foot in my yacht, and ripped up wires, they knocked down my tree, they ripped up...
John, could you excuse me one second? Could you bring up a map?
Yeah.
With an overview of the house?
Yeah.
That way, we could get a better understanding of what he's talking about? And, yeah, could you do an overhead view?
Jeez. I'm asking everybody's skills tonight.
No, I'm sorry.
I wouldn't even know.
No, I just, I, you explaining it, John, and I'm hearing you, and I wanna be able to, like, visualize it, and I think it's kind of a little bit more difficult to, like, I just wanna make sure I get...
I'm on the east side, and that's the side that...
And is the neighbor that you're talking about, what house number is that, four?
That's six.
You're six, or...
I'm four.
You're four, okay.
So...
So, that driveway, the driveway is the, okay.
Christine, you gotta go...
They added a double...
You gotta go across North Elm.
Yeah. Big question.
By the way, there we go, there's a red dot.
Where?
Thank you.
They added a double driveway...
So, what are the trees you're talking?
There's my help, these are gone, everything's gone. My, all my stuff here was ripped up, one of my large trees was ruined, my dog's electric wires were ripped up, and to this day, it's just garbage, my bushes, there's nothing there. If I go over there after it rains, I sink it like...
This has been going on for 18 months?
18 months.
Okay.
Yeah. So, all info here is with the swells, and they actually did build it, so it came down like this, and when I asked them why they did that, they said, "It was so you, 'cause it was not pleasant dealing with them." I welcomed the neighborhood and everything, but they said, one of their workers said, "So you can, what do you think, they want all that effing water in the yacht?" And, and then I knew, I tried to deal with the father, and the son tried to give me money for the tree, I will say, he did try to give me, but it was a full-grown tree, and then I gave it back. I said, "No, this is not the thing to do, because this is, I know, at that point, it was cash." I said, I gave it back to him, I said, "I don't wanna, 'cause I don't know what's gonna happen down the road." So, this whole area, right here, is just open, and I can show you, everything was even before, and if you look, if you look at this, you can see, I'm sorry...
You can lay it down here, John, you can. Some perspective, just to look at where we're looking from.
This was all built up, you can see, this before was all the way down to the foundation, the ground, and their property actually went like this. They built this all up, so you can see...
So, hold on, this is, I just wanna make sure, this is your yards here?
This is theirs, that's all built up.
You're taking the picture from over here?
I'm taking the picture from, here's the butter. He gave me permission to take the picture. So, they built it up, so I'm over here, you can see just by how high everything is, how much fill they put in there, because this is the fence right here, okay? I'm actually way down. So, like, the chain-link fence before, you would have been able to see all of this right here. So, they built up all of this property, and...
John, let me ask you, and I'm just speaking for me right now, what kind of resolution are you looking from us? I mean, I just want you to know that, I kind of mentioned it, like, what we're able to do on this board is, there's limits, do you know what I'm saying? There's limits. We don't have, like, a whole lot of power, personally, on things. So, I'd like to know, like, what resolution or what course of action are you looking from this board?
Well, considering that, even as of last week, I was told they were gonna put a sw, do a swell, and the swell, you go by the house, and that swell is, is like, pretty much non-existent, and there is not enough room, it's supposed to be a foot deep by two feet wide. So, even when it rains still, it goes over to my yacht. And it hasn't been pleasant, you know?
I didn't mean to cut you off, I wasn't, if I can chime in, like, I've, John's going through this, I've got friends that have gone through this. Somebody moves in in town, and they move next to somebody, and they disrupt. I have a friend that I was over there constantly pumping water out of the basement, you know, because somebody put a pool next door, blocked a drain, and it went on for two years. And like, this happens in town, and as it's happening to John, it's happened to others, and we don't, to your point, we don't have a ton of teeth. But 18 months later, this still isn't resolved. The party, the other party involved was in front of Conservation last night with another promise to fix things. But it goes on, and it goes on, and, I mean, 18 months is a bit long for this. You're talking about people that apparently, I'll take your word for it, John, an excavation company should have some understanding of what they're doing, took a permit out for one thing, they expanded it and did more. Sometimes it has to be done, because of what you get underneath, whatever, but more was done, that was done a long time ago. Nothing's been, like, you know, it's Conservation that came back with a plan, they didn't follow the plan the whole way through. We can give chance after chance after chance, and we don't have much teeth. I'm frustrated, not only from John's experience, but from others' experience. Like, the town as a whole, and this isn't to say Conservation's done everything, they can't, like, they've heard John when they've come in, they've, you know, they've brought the people back in, Tim's sent letters, Tim's done stuff, like, it's not, but at some point, we have to figure out how to start holding some people accountable for some of their actions. And that's kind of where I'm at, and I don't think there's much that can be done, other than, you know, I think Conservation can request, you know, if this is the only thing I know, and I'm not saying we should be there, go there, we can talk about it in a minute, but Conservation can request that we place a lien on the property. We'd take a lot to figure out what the actual damages are, and what the lien could be.
It was about $10,000, up in July, they were already up to $10,000.
Yeah.
Then they, at that particular point, they, at the July meeting, they were talking about that it should, that at the next meeting, they said that it would come up to you people for a lien, and that never happened.
Yeah, well, it, John, doing the lien, the lien only needs to be corrected when the property's sold. So, you can do a lien, it's not gonna stop the water, it's not gonna stop, so I, we've talked about this, to be, so, anytime they come in and say they're gonna fix it, our goal is to get it fixed for you. So, you know, but again, time after time after time, promises not delivered. It's not like we can slap a lien on tonight, but we can start, you know, you certainly start the process thinking about it, and what can be done. David can probably talk more about the exact process, but I believe Conservation would have to request it.
And I don't mean to interrupt, but, John, let me ask, is there any actual damage happening, like, in water intrusion to your home now, right now, currently?
No, just...
Okay, so there's not, like, it's not causing any damage to your structure, like, to your home, it's just the, the property?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, that, that's important, right?
To me, to me, it is.
No, no, it's important, but I'm just saying, like, I...
You're not pumping the basement.
You're not pumping the basement, you know what I mean? So, if we lose power tomorrow, your basement's gonna get a ton of water intrusion.
Right. They have, what bothers me is they have made more promises than you can even imagine. They, you know, I had a meeting with Tim and an engineer in December, and was told that, you know, there are all kinds of remedies, there's liens, this is gonna get done, don't worry about it. And they talk about liens at the meetings that I've attended, they're on tape. And, you know, what bothers me is, every single week, I'm told it's gonna be done. This is a huge company. I mean, if you go online, the pipes they put in, and people in ground, are bigger than this room. And one of the things that they said at the beginning was, they didn't know anything about stormwater issues, they didn't know anything else particular about it, and then, then I was told that it was misrelayed between the son and the father. There's a lot of, there's a lot of games played between the father and son.
So, can I just say, 'cause I don't know what, what Concom can do, other than you just mentioned the lien, so I'm just wondering if David can give us any idea of what type of recourse Concom even has, or what any of us have at this point, 'cause I don't know enough on this, unfortunately, except for the lien. So, is there any other recourse or next step that we can take that's maybe not the lien, or, I mean, if the lien is the way to go, that's the way to go, but if there's something else that we can do in the meantime, educate me.
So, the Conservation Commission, I'm gonna presume, based on all these facts, has the ability to be able to levy fines for non-compliance. You can't just put a lien on a property.
Right.
And quite frankly, nobody should want government to have the authority just to put liens on property arbitrarily, for obvious reasons. So, if there are non-compliance issues, they have the ability to start to levy fines. If the fines are not paid, then they can then request, or, then at that point, they can state that they want to put a lien on the property to get, instead of, to get compensation instead of collecting the fees. So, I don't know what the Conservation Commission has done. If they have put in writing that they are incurring a daily fine, and they have sent it to him, and he has not paid it, then the Conservation Commission can say at that point, "Because you have not paid this fine, you would then, we have the ability to be able to file a lien of the similar amount against your property, so that we can get paid." They can't do it, they would have to present it to the Board of Selectment, the Board of Selectment will bring it to Town Council. Understand, because there's due process and everything, is that you can't just send that one letter, there is gonna be a 30, 60, and 90-day period to cure the problem, and there is unfortunately ample case law on this. Municipalities or government in general cannot use the threat of a lien or the collection of fines to be punitive in nature. So, in essence, what that means is, is that by assessing the fines, and then saying, "Oh, we are now gonna place a lien, and we go to court," the first question the judge is going to ask is, "What harm has been created?" So, if there are $10,000 worth of fines, is there $10,000 worth of damages that the town has incurred in order to justify the cost? We would have to prove those damages. I don't know how we do that. Now, you might be able to prove some damages, but as I've advised Mr. Centrella, that could be a civil lawsuit that he can correct.
That was my next...
Because, for example, if they took trees down, we don't like that, but that's not the town's responsibility. If somebody went on private property and took a tree down, that's not where we get involved. So, to answer your question, is that if they have begun the process of informing them that they're levying daily fines or fines in general, and he has not paid, and they have still not complied, then the Conservation Commission can initiate the process to state that without paying the fine, we are now going to levy, place a lien on you. They would send it over to us after the due process has been elapsed, we would bring it to Town Council, we would then bring it to court. And then, to your point, Jeff, is that we would not actually see the results of that lien until either they made payment, or when the house is sold, whatever time that is.
John, you said there are, there are fines, $10,000, is that what you...
That was back in July. I have all three letters that they've sent them, bringing up the fines up further and further and further, and I have them for each of you.
Thank you. Just a quick question, have they notified the resident that fines can be assessed, or have they notified the resident that they are beginning the process of assigning fees? There is a difference.
Well, they, the letters are right there, and I just know that I was told at the last meeting by Lee, and, 'cause Lee and I have had several conversations, he's very, very frustrated, because he feels that, he says, "Why am I on this commission?" He says, "If nothing's being done." It's just, you know, why, why isn't, why aren't things being done? They have been issued letters saying that they're in there, that the liens have gone up. I know, they said, after the last meeting in July, it's right on the tape, they said that, "We want the money, we wanna collect the money for that lien. We are absolutely at that point gonna take, collect the money for that, at that point, and it's going up to Council for a lien." That's what they, that's what they said the last...
Well, so, obviously, I haven't reviewed the tape, and I don't know. They may have had very good intentions to do that, but at the end of the day, what they would have to do is they would have to take a vote at that level to begin assessing fines, not the threat of assessing the fine, but to actually begin the process of finding on a daily basis, or whatever the provision by law and rule of regulation allows. They would then inform that person in writing that fees at that time are starting to be assessed, and that person could either appeal it, or do whatever they're gonna do at that point.
I can't speak to the vote, but there's, you know, there's documentation here saying, you know, as of this notice, fines will be $300 per day, the previous one, whatever this notice would be, $150 a day. Commission has to issue a third notice, it goes to 300, so, I vote or not, I don't know.
So, then they should follow up at that point to say, "As of this date, you owe us $10,000," or whatever the dollar amount is, and you have until this date to pay it or cure the issue.
I can't get them to do anything.
So, the first letter's dated February, and it just says, "If this isn't addressed by February 18th, Conservation Commission will be compelled to issue an enforcement order with fines." Is there an actual order that was, like, issued before the five, before the May one? That's what I'm saying. So, in February, when it wasn't addressed by 2/18, was that issued?
They wanted to go back to that, Lee wanted to go back to that, he said, "Why can't we go back to that?"
Okay.
And they said, "No." They said, "We'll make it for May."
Okay, all right. I was just trying to understand if there was a letter missing in between that actually initiated that action.
Right. But every single meeting was the same thing, it was, and I even had emails that say, "The tally's going up, John, it's up to 10,000, going up, don't worry about it," you know?
Who are those emails from?
Um, Tim.
Tim, you have emails that say, like, an amount that's due? In here? Is that what?
No, I'm in there, but I hope, he said the tally, they're up to so much, can't remember what it is, but it says, "The fines are tallying up," and I have, I believe I have one that says, I'm not sure exactly what it says, 'cause I have, I have tons of emails.
We're coming up against a public meeting at 7:00, so we got four or five minutes.
I mean, I've had to hire legal counsel, because I can't get any questions, I mean, I can't get any help, I can't.
Is that what this last letter is?
Yeah.
All right.
So, I think we got, we got some reading to do. I think we got some questions for Conservation, specifically to, actions based on David's conversation as to what has been done, what hasn't been done. And then, you know, I think the December 15th meeting, we can follow up, I don't, you know, I don't speak for you guys, but...
No, I agree, I mean...
Get some, you know, get some more fact-finding in place for that meeting.
December 17.
What did I say?
15.
Oh, I've been saying that all day.
That's okay.
I'll be here on the 15th, you guys can come on the 17th.
I used to want...
Somebody come on the 15th and tell me it's the 17th.
All alone, all alone.
I'll come in on the wrong day.
Yeah, 17.
Well, that's exactly what I'm saying, 'cause I don't want that.
I've been saying the 15th, yeah, so 17. You know, we can, we can maybe gather some information and go from there.
Specifically, I'd like to know where we're at with, like, have they been notified? Is their fines already being put in place? And then, like, 'cause I see some information here stating the requesting funds, or requesting it to be fixed. Has any work been done?
There's a swell there, it doesn't meet the depth, it's not, it doesn't meet the full...
Does that get inspected?
There's not a...
Those are, these are things I just don't know.
I wonder if it's already even signed off by now, because there's been a lot of undebated things that have happened, so I'm not sure.
Well, they were here, I can tell you, I talked to Lee, Chair, right, today. I believe both of our associates were in yesterday, or last night, for their meeting, and the issue was explained to them, and, again, this has been going on for a long time, so I'm not fooled by it, but with the understanding...
Because they haven't been to any other meetings, so they, you know...
Yeah, but with the understanding that they will address it, so...
And I do have a picture of, I have, I have plenty of things I can give you if you want them.
My ideal situation, John, to be honest, is come December 17th. Thank you. We come back, and you say, "The swell's been done, Conservation signs off on what has been done, and we're done."
Yeah.
And then, we learn from this.
I'd be curious as if it is signed off already, and all, not...
There's, I didn't get, I didn't specifically ask that... There's, I didn't get, I didn't specifically ask that question, but I did get an indication that it was signed off. Except from what, talking to Lee, there was still stuff that needed to be done.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
But thank you for your time. Sorry for the aggravation.
I'm glad that you're here.
Excited to have a nice soft buffer between, you know, what's going on. And then we got Paula next.
Let me stick around for public comment period.
We're going to eliminate it right before you.
We got a new policy. Don't worry.
Not the first time that's happened.
That's true.
John Baker's coming in.
That's actually true.
That's my party.
Yeah, we got the picture of that one. Yeah, don't forget, John, don't forget this one.
Oh, jeez.
The big one.
Put that one back up on your wall.
Back into his connect goals. My son's like, Dad, what is this?
Grass, son, grass.
Thank you again.
Thanks, John.
I hope you all have a happy, a happy night and a happy Thanksgiving.
You too. Thank you. Jaxine.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is a joint meeting with the Board of Assessors. I'm going to read the public notice. Town of West Bridgewater Public Hearing, Property Costification Policy pursuant to Chapters 40, Section 56 of Mass General Law. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, November 19th, 2025 at 7:00 PM in the Eldon Avenue. Board of Selectmen Meeting Room, Town Hall, 65 North Main Street, West Bridgewater, Mass, to consider the, to consider the issue of adopting the residential factor and tax levy percentages, specifically the issue of adopting local property tax levy amongst the five property tax classes, residential, open space, commercial, industrial, and personal property for the fiscal year 2026. Interested parties are invited to be present and be heard. Board of Selectmen, Jeff Ryan Chair. It was published on Friday, October 31st. I don't know, Paul, do you have to open your meeting? Is this a joint meeting?
It does not because they did not, they didn't show. We posted only just in case.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. You guys want to come up, talk? Do you want to hang in the back row?
I was making room for you to get by over there.
We're good. There really isn't much for us to say. Do you guys have? You guys, I assume you guys have the copies?
Yes, they do.
Okay. I'm sure you guys have already kind of taken a quick peek at it. Daniella has done an excellent job putting this all together. It's pretty simple and straightforward. So I really don't have much to add to it since it's a decision you guys have to make. Anything you would like to add before they start grilling you on questions?
Grilling? Grilling is a strong word.
Not grilling. There will be no grilling coming from here tonight.
We would grill the chair, but not the, not the assessment.
We are here tonight to decide on a shift. If you want to have a unified tax rate or if you want to split the tax rate, we put together the packet that we usually do for the year to show our numbers here. Next page shows our class breakdowns as a percentage of total value. And it's pretty consistent. So it's about 70% residential and 30% for the rest. The next page shows the average bill and the average value since 2021 to present. So looking at 2026, there's about a 2.47% increase in the average value in town. And if we stay at the 1.46 shift that we did last year, then that would mean that the average tax bill would be about $7,432, which is also about a 2% increase. The blue is to show the residential, the pink is to show the commercial, and the yellow shows the industrial properties. And then the next page just shows the valuations over the years and has the graph to show how they've gone up. They're steadily going up in all categories. And next one's the more important one. This is the one that really summarizes everything for the tax rate. So again, the blue is showing residential, the pink is commercial, and the yellow is our industrial properties. The column all the way to the left says CIP. That means commercial, industrial, and personal property, and that's the shift that we're allowed to do. So we can go to 1.5 on that. And the next column shows with the potential bill, the estimated tax rate, and the change from 2025 would be. So again, we also highlight the 1.46 because that's what was chosen last year. And then the pages that follow are just a breakdown of this chart. And it shows the increase for the year as well as for the quarter. If there's something specifically you're looking at, it's just a little easier to read on the next pages.
Anything else?
Is it for us?
So as I, as I look at this and always struggle to try to find the right number, obviously the blue represents the residential, pink is commercial, yellow is industrial. Commercial and industrial take on a significantly higher tax rate in town. To put it in perspective, stayed where we were, $147 increase on an average size property, which is valued at $546,000. Average commercials, 1.2. At 146 for us, it'd be $1,240 in rounding for commercial, and it would be almost a $5,000 increase for industrial. While it's easy, easy to say keep residential low, we all will get hit. You know, easiest example, I go to a dry cleaner in town. We bring his up, 1,200 bucks, my price for the dry cleaning's going up. And it, so it multiplies out. And also if we, I'm concerned, you know, in this economy, I'm concerned about everything in this economy, but if we lose some of the industrial base and we lose some of the commercial base, then the residential piece is going to go up more as well. So struggle to try to find that, that balance between everything. And certainly doing it with the least amount of impact to residential. But just, just focusing strictly on residential alone, I think, is a tiny bit short sighted in the, in the big picture of things. So I don't, I don't know. Marcy, you're.
Dan, can you remind me, or Daniella, sorry, somebody, remind me what we were at? We are at 146 this past year before that, though. You know what we were at the year before?
I wasn't the assessor.
Yeah, yeah. I knew that'd be a trick question. I'm just struggling to remember what.
I don't recall what it was two years ago. What I can tell you was is that I got here in 2013. You guys were around 141, 142. There was a earnest desire to try to bring it closer to the 135. We got to 137 around 2018. Every year, the board decided to add upon another tick or two. And so from 137, we have now added, we've gone up to 146. And.
We were at 146 in FY '24.
Okay. And, and understand the purpose of this is that not every single municipality enjoys the benefit of having a commercial and industrial base that we do. So if you were to look at Department of Revenue, State of Massachusetts Department of Revenue recommendations, is that if you're below 20% for commercial and residential, they would normally recommend that you do not have a split rate, that you would have a unified rate. So you could see right now, looking at this chart, because we have a split rate of, say, at the 1.46, commercial and residential is subsidizing the house payer, the resident, by almost $1,700 a year. Because you can see if we only had the single rate, you'd be in 1,900. Because we have a robust commercial and industrial, the state allows us to be able to shift more onto commercial and residential so we can get away from just a single rate. Bridgewater, for example, has a single rate. So we're at 146 in the, in the, the second part to that is, is that during a better economy, I mean, I'll be honest with you, we shouldn't be at 146 right now. We should be in the 13s because we've had growth and we've had pretty good economic years over the last 15 years. Because when the economy really slows down and unemployment starts to go up, that's when you want to shift to commercial and industrial. Because for example, say we were at 137 today, you could shift to 140 and actually lower everybody's tax bill by a hundred bucks. We can't do that because we have already taken that benefit during good times or better times. So, but that's the whole point. You can go to 1.5 unless you get special regulation to legislation to go above that. So to answer your question, apparently, as Jeff said, it's 146 for the last two years in a row.
I have a question. When does this take effect? If we make a change today, when will it take effect?
For fiscal '26 bills. It would be the tax rate for the bill that goes out in January.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a really good question. So just so you understand, the reason we do it at this time in November is because by state law, the bill will be due on February 1st. State law is, is that tax bills have to be out and received 30 days in advance. So they have to be there by January 1st. It takes a couple of weeks for the Treasurer's Department, she will do is that she will get this approved from the Department of Revenue. That takes a couple of days. She then forwards or commits all of the assessed values over to the Treasurer's Office. The Treasurer's Office will take a couple of days to be able to decipher, a week or so. They then have to get the mailing put together and sent out. So quite frankly, though November 19th to January 1st seems like it's six weeks, that six weeks really truly gets consumed rather quickly. And that's why we do it at this time of the year. If you do not do it now and you were to do it at a later date, and oh, and we're on a quarterly bill. So the intent is, is that if you have a $200 increase, in theory, it would go up $50 each quarter. But we've already had two quarters for the year. You've already paid your August bill. You've already paid your November bill. So this gets hit over two quarters. So if you don't do it this round and you do it for your May bill, everybody gets hit at one time.
I guess that's the only other thing to clarify, too. This is, this is to accommodate for the spending that was agreed upon in May's town meeting.
Thousand percent. So town meeting approves by July 1st by state law, a budget. We did it on May 12th. That budget then is presented to the assessors. The assessors then compile all the valuations through the summer. And now they have to raise the funds in order to make sure that we can meet the obligations that town meeting approved. And this chart is a representative of that work that she has done.
Couple of members of the public, not to force you to speak, but anything you want to chime in?
No, I was just coming to get a better idea of the workings of it. And, you know, I feel the same as you. To push it on the commercial is tough, but they can make more money. The residents can't. Well, a lot of them can't.
Yeah, no. And I mean, there's a lot of squeeze on the residents, too. Squeeze on everybody, but.
Jeff, you made a comment about your laundry, for example. John.
Your laundry.
You made a comment about the laundry.
I do laundry at home. I do dry cleaning.
Or dry cleaner. Dry, dry clean your laundry. I used to take my laundry to a dry.
I'm just giving you our time.
You made a comment about the dry cleaners. I, I don't think that, let's say we were to lower this. I don't think it's going to lower the dry cleaner bill. Do you see what I'm saying?
Well, there's no, there's, there's an eight. There's no lower. I mean, we'd have to get up into the, to lower it. I have, I have no desire to lower it to the level that, I mean, that puts an incredible burden on the taxpayer. My, I guess my, and I'm, I'm not sold on any particular numbers. We discussed this at the moment. At 146, I don't think the dry cleaner's property is 1.2 million, but that's the average, right? So I mean, the average commercial property is going to get a $1,200 increase. Somewhere, somehow, we all pay for that increase.
They also get a tax write-off from that.
If we go up, depending, we go up, I'm just looking at you, up one point, takes about, call it 200 bucks off and puts 40 on the resident. So I don't, you know, somewhere near there's, there's the balance. Maybe we're there, maybe it's, maybe it's not. If we go to 15, right, the, the rate goes from 147 to 185 for residential. But yet it drops $200, uh, yeah, $200, close, yeah, $200 on commercial. And it drops three something on, on industrial. So there's a balance there for something.
But commercial, industrial, don't go to town meeting and vote on a budget?
No, they don't. But if they start closing because everything's too expensive, then a hell of a lot more is going to come towards.
But that's, that's my point is that the residents voted on the budget. So at the end of the day, we're kind of responsible for the way that we vote and the tax rate that's set because of it.
They give a big commercial base in town and they haven't left yet.
Exactly. Yeah. And I don't see them leaving if we, you know, put a little bit. But they're also not voting for that. I don't know.
Well, they don't get a say.
Exactly. So residents vote on the budget every year. And we approve what we want to pay for as residents.
Sure.
So.
So what do you guys think it should pay?
I personally like it right where it is. But again, that's open to discuss as well.
I'd go to 144.
Well, if we all vote for different numbers, it goes nowhere now, doesn't it?
Hey, you asked for a number. I threw one out.
Yep.
Well, so Mike says 146. I said 144. Jeff?
Should get a timer.
It's hard all around.
What are you thinking?
I'm thinking 144, 145, 146. I don't know the right number in the, in the mix, to be honest.
I would like us to see, I would like to see us just have more room in case times get bad, to be honest with you, between us and the 1.5.
I get that, but I also think times are not great.
But they may only get worse.
At which point we go as low as we can go. I don't know. My deciding vote, is that what, this is what's going on here?
We don't have a tie.
I did ask you to. I should have started.
Yep.
Stay where we are. 146.
Final answer?
Final answer. I just, I worry about the pinch on the residential, I mean, on the commercial and the industrial, but I also know that there's a lot more bills coming in for everybody. And there's more coming when we talk to water and schools sitting out there.
Well, that's why we may need room to go to next year. Because we may have water bills going, well, we will have water bills going up and we may have a school that may cost $170 million. So we do need somewhere to go here.
I know, and we don't have much room to go, but I, I just, I don't know. I, Dave and I were having this conversation before, like in bad times, we're supposed to be able to, you know, to offset some of this. And I know we got too low to begin with to really do the offset, but it's still bad now. I mean, inflation's sky high. Cost of goods isn't, you know, I want to get politics and this, this, and this, but nothing's cheaper now than what it was a year or two ago, you know? And if anybody's got that, then I'd love to hear more about it, but.
No, I got to agree. The wages have remained the same, but the cost of everything else has increased. The wages have all remained pretty much the same. And, and the cost of things have gone up exponentially. Who's benefiting from it? I don't know. I don't think anyone could tell. Because they all say it's this charge, it's that charge. But when you look at those industries, they're not doing very good either.
The problem with 146 is we need more people to show up at town meeting. We want more people to question numbers. And we need more people to do that. And I don't think anything we're doing here is going to necessarily make that happen. And we need more people to do that. And I don't think anything we're doing here is gonna necessarily make that happen. But that's not a reason to jam people up either. You know, nice to have would be, we got more people to show up at town meeting. We challenge some numbers. We don't blindly vote on some budgets that are up 6%, 7% and, and go from there, but. Yeah, you wanna cast a vote? You're here a lot. Smart man out, smart man.
Well, you guys are up there and I'm back here.
I said my number. So I think based on where Mike and I are, I'll make a motion to set the tax, what is the proper language levy rate?
Yeah, just to set the tax rate shift at?
1.46.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay. I applaud you for sticking up for what you think. That's great. All right. So next on the agenda, approve meeting minutes of October 15th.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you both.
And thank you gentlemen for shutting up.
All right. So I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of October 15th, 2025. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, next, I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of November 5th, 2025 for review. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, moving on, communications.
Did you skip the public comment period policy?
Yeah, the policy.
Section C?
Oh, yeah, I did. I missed that altogether. So we have the public comment period policy in front of us. It, it's gonna go, and we talked about this at, at last meeting. It's gonna go to town council for review, but the general gist of it is, is, as we discussed last meeting, you know, three-minute limit for public comment. And just to be clear, like Mr. Centrello was in, if he's on the agenda, it's not tied to a three-minute. But if you were to come in and wanna talk about a stoplight, you know, at your street corner, with open meeting law, there's things that we can predict, things we can't predict, and things like that, we would certainly listen, give you three-minute time. At that point, chances are we wouldn't have a lot to comment with now, you know, doing some research. But then it could come back, it could be added to the agenda, or it could just continue public comment, something like that. But I've watched, you know, you do this job, you start paying attention to town meetings, and you go look at a Bridgewater town meeting, and you look, and then your feed starts coming through, and there are people that come in and absolutely hijack meetings. And they go on for two or three days where they just talk and talk and talk if you don't have some restriction in place. So we haven't had that problem. I hope not to have that problem. I think three minutes when you're just talking and talking, talking is a fair amount of time to get the point across. And there's certainly other things we can do, so.
Is that language removed from the policy now?
It was, so.
In. My mistake.
Okay.
Well, correct. So, so accepting the comments from the board. At your last meeting, we, you advised me to remove the 20 minutes as the aggregate cap. I've run everything by town council. He thought it was a wise recommendation from the board. So what I had attempted to do was to show you the original policy in removing the 20-minute cap and then showing you the new policy. So that would be fully transparent as to what you're voting on. However, I got a little bit cray cray with the.
With the red line.
So I also.
You're like the cuts off.
I didn't mean to also take out the three minutes. So what I would like to do, again, I apologize, it should have, it should include the three minutes and only delete the 20 minutes. So I'd like to clean this up and bring it to you at your next meeting. That way you have a good, clean copy. But you know now definitively what town council's recommendation was. It is consistent with what you had stated last meeting, so we'll have a clean copy for you next time. Then you can vote and approve it if that's okay with the board.
Yes, absolutely. All right, apologies. Moving along, communication reports from boards, commissions, and town officials. A vote to accept Rebecca Langer's resignation as Assistant Library Director. I was in the library, my annual visit to get my card renewed so I can get books digitally. We were talking about this, but yeah. I just want everybody in town who went to the library once this year. That's all I got.
He showed his face.
But I'll make a motion to accept the resignation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, I'll make a motion to accept Linda Gibson's resignation from the COA, Board of Directors.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Can we send a thank you to Linda? Correspondence from the public to determine course of action. They have none. Public comment period. Anybody have, we've, we've chimed in, which is fantastic. Thank you for your input. Town administrators report.
Yeah, thank you. Just a couple of FYIs. Every single year for the past eight, eight years or so, the state DEP has run a procurement dividends program grant. It's not a lot of money. In this case, it's $1,250. But what we do is that we state that, as I am the chief procurement officer for the town, is that we will endeavor to wherever possible is to purchase products using recycled products if, if at all possible. And by doing that, I've already sent out to all department heads, as I do on an annual basis, brought everything back over to the state. And in return, we get $1,250 that could be used as part of the recycling program. So DPW manages that. Again, I just wanted to let you know, it's not a lot of money. But whenever we can get a few dollars, we always try to do that. So that grant is taken care of. The next is, is that Jean Upton, as you know, is now officially retired. However, she is helping, is helped because you called at your last meeting, you appointed a lady by the name of Gretchen. She has been working, and Jean is providing some transitional assistance. We're just paying her at the same rate, letting her be down. So just again, giving you an FYI.
Have you done that with other departments?
We have, and we'll do our best to squeeze the budget, but if we have to add a little bit of money at the end of the year, we'll do that. But you'll know why. And the last is, is that the December meeting dates, you know, currently scheduled is for December 3rd and December 15th, I mean, 17th. And, and so I do know that the chair has a conflict on the December 3rd. So if it's okay with the board, we would just do everything on December 17th. Keep in mind, that meeting is usually a short meeting, but because we are not doing a December 3rd meeting, we'll have a couple of items on it. One is, is that we will be setting the date for special town meeting that night in January, assuming that you, you vote on that. And MSBA approves on December 12th, the, the current schematic design for the new school. You'll also be, I'll be presenting the budget message that we'll stack, we'll be starting our budget season in preparation for May town meeting. And also, we will also be doing licenses that evening as well. Not that it's a lot, because all three of you have done it for multiple years. But usually, we do that in the early meeting. We'll be doing all of that that night, plus whatever else comes in. The treasurer will be here as well because he'll have some loan agreements that you'll have to sign that we do on annual basis. This will be specific to the water loans that we have appropriated at town meeting over the last two years.
Christine, we have those licenses done ahead of time? I remember, I remember the stack. I'd like to maybe come in a night or two ahead of time and start signing them.
On the 13th, you're gonna come in?
Yes.
Yeah. Signing.
So.
Signing party.
You'll stamp?
Auto pen.
Auto pens an issue.
Just auto pen it?
Auto pens an issue. Yeah. And then our, the tentative date that we've all agreed to for the town meeting is still sitting is January 30th?
January 31st.
31st. I am not talking about dates anymore today. Yeah, so the 31st, which is a Saturday.
And that would be like right, around 11:00 or something? Is that what we're considering?
You'll have to take a vote. I know you discussed 10, but you'll, but you'll take that vote at that time.
Assuming 10 gives, you know, should there be snow or something? Obviously, if there's a lot, there's an issue. But, you know, 10 in my head gives DPW time to sand and do whatever else needs to be done to make it safe for people to get, you know, get into the meeting.
Nice.
We've all put in the request.
We're holding you to that.
Yeah, exactly.
It might snow. I got rid of my plow.
No, sir.
I'm calling Paul up at his house.
Yep.
We'll go, we'll go void that sand budget right now. If there's nothing else, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.